I am so excited to call tonight's city council regular meeting for November, Monday, November seventeenth to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Here.
Mayor Protem Doby?
Here.
Councilmember Hibbard? Absent. Councilmember Lowe?
Here.
Councilmember Nofolda?
Here.
All right, if you can stand with me, I'm going to lead you in the pledge of allegiance, followed by councilmember Lowe with the invocation. Let's go ahead and salute the symbol of our country and all the fabulous things about it. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather today, let us pause for a moment of gratitude. We give thanks for this opportunity to serve our community, for the dedication of those who work tirelessly to make our city a better place, and for the spirit of collaboration that brings us together. May this season of Thanksgiving remind us of the importance of kindness, unity, and service. Let our decisions today reflect wisdom and care for all who call this city home, wishing peace and blessings to each of you and your families during this holiday season. Amen.
There we go. Now you can hear me? Perfect. Okay, we do have a little change of plans. Our first presentation today was to be given to Bonnie Smith in celebration of her hundredth birthday. Things changed. She's feeling a little under the weather, and at a hundred years old, she's good to go. So, she's a longtime resident. She actually, her and her husband bought their house over in Cary Row in 1955. And so, she's still doing well, but sniffles at a hundred, you take care of yourself. So, we will make sure she gets all of her accolades at her party on Saturday. So, the next one will be recognition of Miguel De La Torre for 25 years of dedicated service.[187.84][187.84][applause]
All right, I am extremely, extremely proud and happy to commend this individual here, Miguel De La Torre, for 25 years working in our public works for the city of Los Alamos. He exemplifies what an employee or a team member, what we call it here in the city. He's dependable, he's knowledgeable, he displays great leadership as a senior maintenance worker, and he's got a good attitude, he comes to work, and everything that we can dream about, about an employee for the city that services our residents, he is the definition of that. And so, we have a little token that the mayor will hand out. We have a certificate and a plaque to commend your 25 years. Yes, we talk about, you know, when he's going to hang it up, and I tell him, you can't hang it up quite yet because we need him. But again, he's a great family man. We talk about his family. You know, we talk about his son who's in, yeah, we'll bring him up, but his family. He tells me about his son who is almost done with his residency and meds. He's done. So, again, in terms of raising his family, his commitment and to work, and again, he exemplifies what we all hope to be as employees for the city of Los Alamos. So, again, join me in applauding him for his 25 years of exemplary service.[303.94][303.94][applause]
I just want to say thank you to all of us that have been like all along journey with me and support me for all these years, and I just want to say thank you to anybody.
Okay, our next proclamation is to Pacific Organic Pops in recognition of Small Business Saturday. This place is the Bay if you haven't been there or not. So, I'd like to invite Irvin Montenegro to come on up, and also Arlene Guzman and Ariana Cabral Felix. Come on up.
Hi. So, good evening, everyone. Mayor, thank you for the introduction and council and everyone here in support. So, I can personally speak on behalf of this business in our city. As the mayor alluded to, it's delicious, but what makes it even more of a reputable organization in the city is that it's family-owned, exemplifying why we celebrate our small businesses, particularly for the month of November, kicking off the holidays. So, I personally, on behalf of the city, on behalf of the development services, everyone that has, you know, stopped by your shop and enjoyed it, we just want to thank you for your 10, nine-plus years of service. And I can say that it's felt through, like, the excitement from when we filmed the mayor's business spotlight. That's going to be coming out soon. But it was delicious, it was organic, it was like everything that you would expect from a small business in our city. So, I want to congratulate you and thank you, and just hopefully, we can always celebrate you beyond just the month of November. So, thank you.
All right, for this next presentation for the 2024 Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award, I'd like the chief to come forward, please, to talk about that.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, mayor. Tonight, I have a couple of presentations to make to some outstanding individuals within the police department. And we're going to start off with an organization that that should be, you know, a well-household name by now, and that being Mothers Against Drunk Drivers. And that organization is the gold standard. It recognizes officers across the state who go out of their way to proactively make drunk-driving arrests. And the one thing that has been proven time and time again is that by getting drunk drivers off of the streets, it absolutely saves lives. And so, tonight, we're recognizing Detective Joel Espinoza, who in 2024 led the department with nine DUI arrests. So, please join me in congratulating Detective Joel Espinoza.[611.94][611.94][applause] And we also have a recognition here from Orange County Border Supervisor Janet Nguyen, and I believe we also have a presentation from Tony Strickland's office.
Thank you, chief, and thank you, mayor, as well as the city council. My name is Max Warner. I'm here on behalf of Senator Tony Strickland of the 36th Senate District, here substituting for Zecharia Harugi, who could not be here this evening. And on behalf of Senator Strickland, I'd like to present the certificate of recognition to Detective Joel Espinoza in honor of your outstanding dedication and exemplary service as a recipient of the 2024 Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award. Your unwavering commitment to preventing impaired driving, protecting roadway safety, and safeguarding the lives of community members reflects the highest standards of professionalism and public service. Through your vigilance, compassion, and courage, you have made a profound difference in reducing tragedies caused by drunk driving. So, with deep appreciation, we commend your extraordinary efforts and celebrate your contribution to creating safer roads for all. On behalf of the state of California, California State Senator and Senator Tony Strickland, congratulations.
One more award that I'd like to present this evening. And this is presented by the Orange County Auto Theft Advisory Commission. So, here in Orange County, we identify the officers who proactively make the most recoveries of stolen vehicles. I think everybody realizes that auto theft is one of the causes of higher insurance rates, and here in here in Orange County, we recognize those individuals who proactively go out and address this crime. And in for the city of Los Alamos, that was none other than Corporal Daniel Kim. So, please join me in recognizing him for receiving This one comes with all kinds of awards. And we also have another presentation.[795.14][795.14][laughter]
Long time no see. All right, Corporal Daniel Kim. In honor of your outstanding achievement as a recipient of the Auto Theft Advisory Committee Award, your exceptional investigative skill and wavering vigilance and dedication to combating vehicle theft exemplify the highest standards of law enforcement. Through your commitment to crime prevention, teamwork, and community safety, you have made a significant impact in reducing auto theft and protecting the public. On behalf of the state of California, the California State Senate, Senator Tony Strickland, congratulations.
Okay, we have one more presentation that's going to be made this evening, and that is going to be made by Captain Luke South. So, please come forward.
Good evening. Thank you, chief, mayor, council. So, Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Appreciation Week is an annual observance held during the second week of November to recognize and honor the professionals who work tirelessly behind the scenes in law enforcement. These dedicated individuals manage essential functions such as processing reports, handling subpoenas, maintaining and safeguarding property and evidence, coordinating communications, and providing crucial administrative support. Their expertise and attention to detail ensure that our department operates sufficiently and that officers in the field have the information and resources they need. This past week, we honored our records and support personnel with a luncheon to express our gratitude for their professionalism, reliability, and the crucial role they play in the success of our agency. Thank you to all our outstanding records and support personnel for the vital work you do. We appreciate you today and every day. And I would like to invite up Belinda and Gina, two of our record specialists, to accept the awards.
All right. No, I'm good. I'm good. I have it. Yeah. Now, I'd like to invite Dr. Ron Noda to come and talk about our, is that what it is? Yes. I'm all messed up. About Los Al Bux.
Again, good evening, mayor, member of city council. Thank you. I'm excited to announce that we are coming out with our Recreation Bucks program for the city of Los Alamos. As you recall, it's a few years ago, we did Los Al Bux. We did that two rounds, and so, we're excited to bring this back. This is a little bit of nuance to it due to the feedback that we received from the initial two rounds of Los Al Bux. Okay, so again, as you can see, we have a banner right in front of the dais or council. We want our residents and our community to shop local this holiday season. And while you shop local this holiday season, you can earn bucks, right? So, again, eat local, play local, stay local, and therefore, you can earn Recreation Bucks. So, exactly what is Recreation Bucks? Okay? So, when a person goes out there and spends money at a Los Alamos-based business, right, all you got to do is get from that approved business, right, to keep the receipt, and then depending on how much you spend, you will earn Recreation Bucks. So, as you can see from this table here, $150 will get you $65. All the way down to $30 will get you $10. Okay? So, again, any community member has to go into a Los Alamos-approved business. It has to be in Los Alamos. They have to be vetted through, right, through our team here. And again, you spend money, you keep that receipt, and then you can go, that's your Recreation Bucks. Okay? So, what is Recreation Bucks? You get that receipt, you go to the community center, okay, and then you can apply or register for a class, all right? So, are Recreation Bucks redeemable for cash? No, they cannot be redeemed for cash. What is the timeframe to receive Bucks? So, the program will start December now to December 1st in a few weeks, and it will run all the way to May 17th. So, you can go to, like I said, approved Los Alamos business, spend your money at that business, and you can get from the timeframe of December 1 of this year, 25 to May 17th. When can the Recreation Bucks be used? It can be used for the Los Alamos Recreation Community Services programs and classes during the 2025 winter season and spring season only. So, that's roughly January 5th to May 29th. Okay? What are those programs that you can apply for and then get that quote discount or Recreation Bucks? You can use it for aquatic programs, contract classes, day camp, preschool program, youth and adult sports. So, basically, if I go back to here, I'm going to use an example. You go in, you go to a restaurant, you spend money, okay? If you're like my family, they eat a lot, okay? And so, I'm spending over $150 at a restaurant, all right? And so, I will get $65 off, okay? So, then I go to the community center, I say, hey, I want to register my child for a, um, let's pick one, day camp, right? So, they have during that timeframe, they have a February camp, right, a President Day Week camp. Is that correct? Okay, right? And let's say it's $100 per child for that entire week, okay? I will get $65 off. So, out of my pocket, I only have to pay the difference. Okay? So, it's a it's a great way to, you know, get money, right? It's twofold. You spend money, shop local, right? And then you also buy that resident or that community member paying for that, will get a discount at a Recreation class. Who can receive Recreation Bucks? So, this is a nuance here because we want people to come into Los Alamos to spend money. It's anybody. It's not restricted to like the first round or the second round of Los Alamos Bucks where we're handing people the $50 cash. This one here, they're spending their own money. So, anyway, you could live in Rossmore, you could live in Seal Beach, but you have to spend money. Again, I want to stress, it has to be in a Los Alamos-based business that's approved, okay? So, you see that big graphic up there that has the Recreation Bucks? That's how you can tell that the business is approved. One of the things that when a business, they have to sign up, they have to fill out a one-page form, they have to turn it in, we vet it through, and once we approve them, we give them a sticker. It's quite large. It's about this big. They got to hang it at their front door, so you can't miss it. That will tell the community member that is an approved, vetted Los Alamos business. Okay? How do I redeem my Bucks? I gave that example. Again, it has to be, you have to go to community center. Unfortunately, you cannot register for a class online. You have to go in person to the community center during their operating hours to register for a class. Okay? Again, if you want more information, please visit our city website and or call. There's a city hall number or the community center number. So, again, we encourage people to shop local this holiday season and earn Recreation Bucks, and at the same time, that will support our local businesses, which is our backbone of our city. And at the same time, you could get a discount to do whatever you fancy, whether it's you want to learn how to paint, you want a day camp, aquatic program. There are some restrictions that apply. So, again, please visit the city's website for additional information. Thank you. Yes?
I got four questions.
I will try my best to answer them.
Oh, I know you've got it. The first, are they transferable? So, say you've got a grandparent that would like to not use them for themselves. If they are willing to pay for the class, can they use it for someone else?
Yes, you have to hand that invoice or that receipt to that person. So, I'm going to take your example. If it's a grandparent, they just have to give it to their child, their adult child, right, and stuff, yes. I want to note there that one receipt or invoice is only applicable for one class or one program. So, you can't combine, right? So, you can't go like, oh, I earned $50 here in Recreation Bucks. I earned $50 here at another business for Recreation Bucks. You go in and say, oh, it's a $100 day camp. You can't use two invoices to offset that $100 fee. It's one invoice per class or program.
So, that was actually one of my other questions. What if you have more than one child? So, they want to go in the same class, but it's two different children.
So, again, it's an invoice per person, per class. So, you just have to spend more money at a Los Alamos business to get the discount.
Okay. And then you mentioned that the businesses will have to be put onto a list, and they have to get a big sticker.
Yes.
Will the list be on our website where they can check it before they physically show up?
Absolutely. So, the team here, some of them are sitting behind me. They're out there recruiting businesses. So, one of the things is, we made it easier for the business. So, if you are a business that went through the first round or second round of Los Al Bucks, we made it way easier for you. It's just a one-page form. You just turn that page in, and then once it's vetted and approved, we update that on our email list, on our website, excuse me, every week. So, we'll get it, we'll get it up every week on our website. And what I was going to say here is, I lost my train of thought. But we're out there. My team's out there getting the businesses and everything. So, again, we update that weekly. And then check your social media. We'll probably update it on social media as well.
Okay. My last question is, how many times can you can you just sign up for as many different classes as you would like? Like, say someone has a big family like you, and they regularly go to different businesses and spend the $150.
Absolutely.
They can just sign up for as many classes as they would like.
Yeah. So, theoretically, if you go to 10 businesses that are approved, and you get 10 different invoices, you could sign up for 10 different classes. That's correct.
Yes, I knew you. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just had one quick question. How will the businesses, other than our fabulous group back there, get access to the form to sign up for it?
So, few ways. I believe today, we sent out emails. Every business has a business license in the cities, okay? But secondly is, we're going door-to-door or going to that business trying to recruit them. Or third, you could always call into the city, and we will either email it or the city. I tell my team, the city's not that big. We can drive it over to where you need to be. Okay?
Any other questions? Perfect. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, on to oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Demerits are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. This is the appropriate time to come forward to speak on any agenda item. Tonight's agenda includes one public hearing. Comments will be called for that hearing at the appropriate time. Comments will not be called individually for items not listed as public hearings. Request that everyone fill out a speaker card and/or sign in on the podium sheet. This allows staff to contact you for follow-up if needed. Do I have any? Look at all those shy guys back there. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close oral communications. Updates from the mayor. Winter Wonderland's coming up. The city of Los Alamos invites you to the 14th Annual Memorial Care Millard Children's and Women's Hospital Long Beach Winter Wonderland, presented by Universal Voice Systems. Mark your calendars for Saturday, December 6. Join us from 4:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Pine Street and St. Isadora Historical Plaza for an unforgettable evening of holiday cheer, all completely free to the community. Experience real snow and outdoors ice skating right on Pine Street, courtesy of UWS. Meet Santa Claus and the Grinch in our whimsical Santa's Village at St. Isadora Historical Plaza, sponsored by Financial Partners Credit Union. You can also pick up your tamales there, the bomb. Holiday decorating contest, we'd like to invite you, all of the city of Los Alamos residents, to participate in the 2025 Holiday Decorating Contest. Registration is free and required to participate in the contest. Judging will take place on Wednesday, December 10th, between 6:00 and 9:30 p.m. To ensure your home is judged, please visit cityoflosalamos.org to complete the registration form. Judges will select three winners in each of the Los Alamos neighborhoods for the following divisions: brightest, most creative, most holiday spirit. Winners will receive a $25 gift card to a local restaurant and a lawn sign to display in front of their home. A list of the winning homes will also be posted on the city's website and the city of Los Alamos social media accounts. And good evening, Los Al. The community is invited to join us at the Los Alamos Community Center on Tuesday, December 9th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. as we celebrate our city's achievements and share what's on the horizon. 2025 has been an extraordinary year for Los Alamos, highlighted by innovative programs, expanded services, and major infrastructure enhancements that continue to strengthen our community. During this special evening, we will debut our citywide EV transportation program. The Los Al link and officially launch our exciting new Economic Development Initiative, Recreation Bucks. This free community event will include appetizers, giveaways, and a celebration of our collective process as we look forward to the future of Los Alamos. For more information, as always, visit our website. And then I just had a few things. I attended my Cal Cities Board meeting. We discussed issues that we want Cal Cities to focus on in 2026. Part of it is the housing, the arena numbers, e-bikes, and the creative nitrous oxide issue that seems to be popping up. I did have the thrill of going to trunk-or-treat. I've never seen so many little kids in one space. It was just, there was so much energy there. How many thousand?
5,500.
5,500 people, almost half of our population. Nice job. It was just fabulous, from the music to the train to the pumpkin patch. The trunks were awesome. The food was great. So, we had a really good time. I attended my OCFA Budget Finance Committee meeting. We did receive a clean audit for the 2425 fiscal year with no material adjustments. And last week, I attended the city selection and didn't realize it, but I was elected to the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. I know that because my former colleague Troy Edgar served on that for nine years. It's the reason we have Coyote Creek Park. This is 79 cities makeup, the RMC, with only eight Orange County cities included. A governor's appointment allowed two Orange County cities to be on the board out of 24 board members. Additional board members include a representative from the Army Corps of Engineers, which is very important for our base, OC Public Works, and the State Department of Parks and Recreation. So, I'm pretty excited about a position I wasn't planning on going for, but it just became available, and I think we're going to be able to get some good stuff out of it. And with And with that, I'll turn it over to updates from the city staff.
I only have one tonight. Uh, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to, uh, point out that myself, along with the mayor, uh, joined a call with, uh, Fire Chief Fantasy, along with our Division, uh, One Chief, in order to talk, talk about different partnership opportunities that we might have in the future. Obviously, those are ongoing discussions, but as always, we're incredibly thankful to have a partner like O C F A who's willing to talk with us about what exactly, uh, is possible out there in the world. And, uh, again, I just really appreciate the time and the effort that they put into, uh, ensuring that a city of our size has a voice at that table. Thank you.
Thank you. As always, my firefighters are awesome. Okay, on to consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion. If a council member requests separate action on a specific, would anybody like to pull an item? Okay, um, so can I get a motion?
So move.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, Madam, was that for consent calendar or warrants?
I know, I was gonna say that.
It was warrants.
No, that was consent calendar. So let me go back to warrants.
Okay.
Um.
Well, I take mine back then.
So we, we've passed the consent calendar. We're just going back to item nine.
That's why I shouldn't read along.
Okay, um, let's see. Per the council's accelerated warrant policy, staff will note questions and follow up after the meeting. No questions were received regarding tonight's warrants. Are there any new questions for follow-up before the next council meeting? All right, can I get a motion in a second?
I will move the correct thing.
And I'm gonna second you. Thanks for reading along. Um, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Um, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Doby?
Yes.
Councilmember Hibbard? Absent. Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Nofolda?
Yes.
Okay, and we're done. Consent calendar. I'm gonna go use this one because this is an order. There we go. Okay, we're on to discussion item eleven. Consideration of a formal censure of Councilmember Hibbard. Staff, can we get a report, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would just note that this item has been prepared, uh, by outside counsel, Shaleen Bennett, who is here this evening and prepared to present to the council.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city manager, city attorney. Uh, my name's Shaleen Bennett and I work with your city on various, uh, as outside special counsel on various employment, labor, and elected official issues. I'm one of the managing partners at Liebert Cassidy Whitmore. Um, we are a statewide law firm that represents most of the cities in the state of California as, um, outside special counsel. And I have, um, been practicing in this area for over thirty years. Uh, your city received allegations of misconduct against one of your council members, Councilmember Hibbard. Uh, and your city was obligated, legally obligated, to follow up on those allegations. Uh, your city retained through, uh, working with my office, an outside neutral investigator to look into the allegations. The investigator Karen Kramer, um, interviewed twelve witnesses. Uh, her investigation lasted over the course of four to five months. It's thorough, it's complete. And, um, she completed that investigation. It, it, the report came before your council in closed session. That report is privileged and confidential under the attorney-client privilege, but your council has waived a portion of that privilege for what I'm articulating this evening. So it's a, a limited waiver of the privilege related to what I am communicating. The investigation determined the following, that it's undisputed, undisputed, that on multiple occasions in open session, Councilmember Hibbard willfully, deliberately, intentionally, made false and unfounded allegations and accusations against multiple city staff, both management, uh, city employees, both management and staff, that those individuals were incompetent, made numerous mistakes, and that those individuals, your staff, your employees, management and staff, engaged in misconduct and had conflicts of interest. She made these allegations against, uh, your employees even after she was advised that the accusations were false. She continued to repeat the false allegations, the investigator found with the intent to embarrass staff, discredit staff, and damage your employees' reputations, ultimately eroding public confidence in your employees. And yes, it did have that result because her investigation found that the public started repeating the false accusations. The report found it's undisputed that Councilmember Hibbard created a toxic work environment for city staff. With that, what's before your council this evening is a resolution, um, for public censure of Councilmember Hibbard. Although this is a weighty, um, uh, uh, resolution before you, it is something that your council should give serious consideration to. Because the allegations were uniformly sustained and there was no dispute, uh, your council should consider engaging in the conduct of distancing and showing that your council does not condone the behavior that is included and sustained in this report. What's also included in your resolution are all of the areas that your council, including Councilmember Hibbard, has fair notice of what the rules of the game are. Those rules, um, that you're all aware of are in your handbook, your code of conduct, your governance protocols, and your code of ethics. They include treating each other and everyone with courtesy. They include fact-checking information with colleagues, the city manager and the city attorney and city staff, prior to making any statements. They also include speaking directly to the city manager about concerns regarding city operations and staff performance. Councilmember Hibbard acted individually, outside of her legislative capacity, and outside the direction of a majority of your council at any duly agendized meeting, all while not utilizing the appropriate city structure of working through the city manager related to city operations and personnel. And, um, as outside special counsel, I would recommend to you, um, to approve the resolution which shows that you condemn the, uh, behavior that is sustained in this report. Um, and that specifically, uh, Emily Hibbard contributed to a toxic workplace, unilaterally acting outside of her role as a council member and violating your various city policies. Any questions, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council?
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shaleen. All right, if we have no questions, can I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we are on to public hearing, um, for the state mandated update to accessory dwelling unit regulations. Uh, can we get a staff report, please?
So, Madam Mayor, this is largely an update, uh, mandated by the state in order to, uh, address the way that cities are, uh, processing, um, A D U's or excel, um, accessory dwelling units. Uh, Dr. Noda obviously can get into the nuts and bolts of the, um, of the new rules that have come into place, but largely, uh, the state is wised up to some of the, uh, different things that we have tried to do here locally in order to try to ensure that we have local control over these units. Um, they have largely stripped away the last remaining passages of that control at this point. And, uh, that is the item that is before you this evening. If you, if the council has any questions, uh, Mr. Noda will be able to answer them.
Can you briefly go over the items that they've stripped away that have changed very briefly?
Sure, I can highlight some of it. So, um, important component of existing proposed regulation is the differentiation, differentiation between four types of A D U. So there's an attached A D U, so an A D U that consists of new living space that is physi, physically attached to a primary dwelling structure. The definition of what a detached A D U is, an A D U that consists of new living space that is physically separated from but located on the same lot as the primary dwelling structure. A converted A D U, an A D U that consists of a repurposed living space within an existing primary dwelling or accessory structure, including conversion of bedrooms, attached or detached garages, storage areas for similar uses, and a junior A D U, which is a unit that is no more than five hundred square feet in size and contains entirely within a single family residence or its attached garage. It may include sep, separate sanitation facilities or may share sanitation facilities within the existing structure. Um, again, there are many, but, uh, those are, I would like to highlight because of the fact that there's a difference of, um, definition. But, um, in the staff report, there's, Table one illustrates it. Um, let me look right here. Um, you know, it talks about the number of units per lot. So the existing one that we have in our code, uh, which was adopted in twenty twenty-three, uh, says that for lots with proposed or existing single-family dwelling, no more than one attached, converted, or detached A D U and one J A D U, again, junior A D U, shall be permitted on a lot. Um, but the new code says that, uh, uh, just again, some language, um, it says no more than one. We, it, it's changed to one attached or converted, um, A D U or one J D, J A D U shall be permitted on the lot. Okay? Um, again, um, in that existing one, it talks about the square footage of being eight hundred feet, square feet or less. Uh, the, the new law strikes that eight hundred feet or less. So again, there's some clarification of language. Again, um, it's in the staff report, it's quite lengthy, um, but those are some of the highlights that I will point out.
Okay. And they still, from the original, um, law that they put in, we still don't have to require additional parking for the A D U's, correct?
That is correct. So the city has parking requirements, as you stated, Mayor, um, putting in the A D U, uh, does not have to adhere to the city parking restrictions.
Okay. Okay, um, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open it up for public comment. See none? Um, ask, come back to the council, are there any questions or comments on this?
I'm getting in trouble.
Okay. Um, can I get a, uh, can I get a motion in a second? Oh, yeah. Do you want to do the reading? Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, before the council, for consideration this evening, is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirteen entitled, In Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Amending and Restating Section seventeen point two eight point zero two zero of the Los Alamos Municipal Code Concerning the Regulation of Accessory Dwelling Units.
All right, now can I get a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
We, we don't have a choice in this, correct?
I'm abstaining.
So I'd say that, that, I guess what I would add to that is that the city has always updated its municipal code to reflect state law and that if the ordinance is not updated, uh, staff would be required to follow, uh, the state statute either way. However, there's a, a benefit to having the ordinance actually mirror state law in the sense that applicants who come into the city have the one place to look in terms of figuring out how to process their application. And then somewhat related to that is that each city itself routinely monitors cities' A D U ordinances and as part of its, uh, certification of housing elements, for example, it wants to know that you're maintaining an up-to-date A D U ordinance. If that falls.
So begrudgingly, I'll second that, um, because of the state mandate and we don't win against the state. So we have a motion to second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I said I was abstaining. I meant it.
And we have one abstention.
It's all I can do. It passed anyway. I did make my point, ladies.
All right. So now we're on to council announcements. So let's go ahead and start with Councilmember Nofolda. You've gone two months with nothing to report, come on, bring it. One comment.
Well, you know, I did go to Monterey to the, uh,
Yes, you did.
I forget the date of the conference, but it was, uh, the, uh, cities with military bases. So I attended that. I did attend my Orange County Sanitation Commission meeting. Um, there will be some construction starting, but not soon, but they're, they're gonna prep you for that. So if you go to the O C Sand website, you can see how we will be affected when they start, uh, tearing up our streets.
And the conference that he went to was Association of Defense Communities.
Yeah. It's Monday and I'm tired.
Thank you, veteran. Okay, Councilmember Lo?
Well, I did go to trunk or treat too, and I was amazed at how many people were at trunk or treat. That was pretty impressive, but I thought I would take this opportunity to mention a couple of city employees. And, uh, the first one I'd like to mention is Tom Oliver, so, uh, developmental services and, uh, senior planner. I've known Tom for a super long time and he's consistently takes care of things, he consistently is fair and, uh, consistently, um, is pleasant to all the people that come in. I know it's not, it's not an easy job that he has, but he's been great for a super, super number of years. Um, and also, I'd like to mention somebody that I'd never met before. Met for the, well, I guess I've met him once now, but that is a police officer and that is Officer Merzada. So I hadn't met him before, but I observed what happened one day, when his, his interaction with some of our, uh, some of our, um, city citizens in the city. And I was amazed at what a great job he did. So he took the information, researched the information, acted upon it, and, uh, and kind of took care of it. Everyone was, everyone was happy. I was kind of of the opinion at first, like, no, I don't get the police involved, don't, uh, you don't need to do that. But he actually, you know, exceeded and beat my expectations of how he handled the situation. And again, I'd never met him before, I didn't, didn't, uh, didn't know who he was. Actually, I don't think I know, really knew before taking this position that I knew any, uh, city police officers, so, which I kind of think is a good thing, right? I, on one hand. I kind of take pride in that a little bit. So anyways, but, um, he did a great job in my observation of what would happen there. So I wasn't involved, I wasn't involved, chief, but, um, I just observed anyways, but I was pleasantly surprised. So I just wanted to say, uh, thank, thank you to him and, and always thank you to Tom on, on super, a lot of occasions and Officer Merzada on my one interaction, so.
So what'd you get pulled over for?
I'm sorry.
What'd you get pulled over for?
Seriously, I wasn't involved.
All right, Pro Tem Doby, you're up.
Okay, and just to be clear, I can abstain because it passes anyway, but I'm very wary of being bullied into doing things that do not fit my city. So that was my very quiet, rebellious stand. And I know that most of y'all stand with me, so I just, if it would have impacted anything, I would have voted in the affirmative, but it didn't matter because you had three yeses anyway. All right, so what have I been up to? I went to my A C C O C Executive Committee meeting where we are looking at ways to increase membership across Orange County because that particular agency is Orange County focused. They're not North and Southern Cali, they are specifically Orange County. I went to my mosquito and vectors committee meeting. Um, two of the major things was the, and it scared the bejesus out of me, the threats of A I and how grotesquely it has evolved, it's really freaky. So, you know, they're talking about how you gotta change all of your passwords and watch all of your websites and, you know, I'd rather just do the, what is it, the ostrich, stick my head in the sand. Uh, but have a plan because A I is getting out of control. But then also, I just want to remind us all that any updates that we get as far as vectors, mosquitoes, rats, mice, whatever, as soon as I get it, I send it over to our fabulous city clerk and we get it up to our website and then it also goes out to our social media. Um, I filled in for Mr. Jordan at one of his O C Sand meetings and they were talking about expanding their services in Fountain Valley. So, um, I guess sewage is a bowman. I went to my O Cog Board meeting and I went to my library advisory. I went to my OCAG Board meeting and I went to my Library Advisory Board meeting. And then just a reminder again, any updates and events, they, as soon as I get them, I send them over to City Clerk and then they either go to our website or they go to our social media. I was also at the wildly successful trunk or treat event, but I was inside of the beverage garden, making sure that everyone stayed hydrated and having a good time. And the last meeting I went to was my SCAG meeting and they were doing a presentation on the downtown areas and how to make it more of like a social hub and a gathering place for the community, which we don't really have a downtown area, but we are looking for a way to have like a come and gather. So we were able to get some ideas and of course, the ones that I sent over to Dr. Noda, he had already heard of. But that's what I've been up to.
All right. All right, and with that, we'll adjourn this meeting at six fifty and our next meeting is Monday, December fifteenth at six o'clock. Have a good evening and have a wonderful Thanksgiving.